Let me call this thing to order. This is the agenda of the regular meeting of the City Council of Rio Grande, Texas. We're Wednesday, December 13th, 2017. It is 6:01. And we are in Commission Chamber, City Hall, at 5332 East US Highway 3, Suite A, Rio Grande City, Texas. We'll go to item 1A. And I'll ask Mr. Ramirez to lead us in a prayer, and I'll ask Mr. Jones to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Lord, thank you, Lord. We ask you to please guide us and ask you to please clear our minds as we make decisions for this wonderful city of Rio Grande. Please, I guess, bless us this beautiful day, and in your name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and eternal. Almighty the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, who art in heaven, who art in the earth, and who art in the heavens, and who art among the nations. Thank you. We'll go to item B, Roll Call and Funding of the Force.
Thank you. Mayor Villarreal? Mayor Villarreal absent. Mayor Protem Garza?
Here.
Commissioner Salinas? Commissioner Salinas absent. Commissioner Ramirez?
Here.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
You have a quorum, Mr. Garza.
Thank you. We'll go to 1C, Departmental Reports.
We've got a few departmental reports. We had parade this last Friday, Ms. Hernandez.
Commissioners, like Mr. Perez mentioned, we did have the Christmas Parade on Friday. We had 50 entries into the parade, and I just want to, at this time, recognize some of the winners. For our elementary school division, first place was General Ricardo Sanchez Elementary. Second place was Magnet Elementary. Third place was Dr. Mario Ramirez Elementary. In the middle high school division, first place was Ringled Middle School. Second place was Early College. Third place was RGCC ISD Curriculum and Instruction. In our business category, first place was Stark County Memorial Hospital. Second place was Little League. And third place was R&amp;R Collision. We hosted a small gathering after the parade here, and some of them came and picked up their trophies. So, we all got positive comments from the parade. We got a good turnout, and it was very cold, and we had terrible weather leading up to it, so surprisingly, we had a lot of entries. Very happy that the community came out to see the parade.
How many entries were there?
There were 50. Including the floats, we had 33 floats, and the rest were cars, walking groups, the band. So, and the parade lasted about an hour, so it was good.
The line was all the way back to Cox Street, there along Water Street. So, it was a big, big, a lot of participation, so it was good to see.
Yes, beautiful floats, beautiful. And the full video is available on YouTube. For any of you all that missed the parade, you can see it on our YouTube channel.
Good job, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you, and I do want to recognize all the city departments did assist. Our EDC helped us out a lot. Our Main Street program, of course, Public Works, Public Utilities decorated that fence for us, and Administration helped us host the after-party here. And, of course, Fire and Police Department. So, it did take all the city departments to make this possible, so, thank you.
Congratulations to all the winners, and congratulations to the people that put it together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Guian?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have a couple of things to report. Since our last meeting, I'm happy to say that we have an executed agreement with St. Ives, and this is for the development of 38 acres of retail area northeast of US 83 and the northeast intersection of US 83 across Walmart. And we have approximately 20 businesses expected at the new development. And, of course, the city and the EDC are positioned to gain from the land acquisition that they're capturing out of this project. There's a couple of steps that take place after this agreement has been executed, and so we're working through those. And you'll expect to see some activity in the first part of the year, so we're happy about that. Also, we're excited that one project has been executed and another one's about to take place, and that's the strategic plan. The EDC has talked about strategic planning for some time now. With the technical assistance of the National Association for Latino Community Asset Builders and the financial support of BBVA Compass, we are going to initiate a three-year, high-level strategic plan that is going to express the city's vision and objectives and execution strategies for the purposes of ensuring higher standards of living for residents and shared prosperity. We've gone back and forth talking about what these steps are going to be, but we all agree that the priorities will focus on investing in our people, making sure that we're providing greater opportunity through training and skills development, expand our targeted industries. Obviously, retail is one of those that is developing in our city. There's always been discussions about entertainment and some industrial, accelerating entrepreneurship. I can't tell you enough how many small business owners we have in our community, and you know it, because some of you are small business owners. And so, that's one of our focuses. Downtown is also in the mix of those priorities. Improving the physical infrastructure, and this is going to take us working together with other governments to expand or improve on our roadways, on our public utilities, on the infrastructure that our community needs to grow. And so, we're excited to write the first chapter of this city strategic plan, and I have to thank the members of my EDC board who are here that said, "Yes, let's do this." It's going to be a long process. We're going to learn a lot from this experience, but we're looking forward to the challenge, and I thank you for giving us the green light on this project. And that's my report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, I just wanted to ask you, I went by the trampoline place that's being developed, and...
Fits into the entertainment portion of your plans, but yes.
I just wanted to see if you can be able to reach out to them, to see how we can be able to help them out, to be able to promote the place. I know they're working hard at it. I think they're getting the pieces together already. I think their plan is to try to finish it up and open it up by February. That's my understanding. But, you know, the gentleman is just a little, he just wants the city just to retaliate a little bit, to be able to promote him, you know, to be able to get the word out, you know, that they're coming in.
Absolutely, and we have made some mentions on social media. Mr. Barrera has been by to talk about his plans. We look forward to that entertainment venue, because we know that's an added area of entertainment for our kids and exercise because of the nature of the type of business. And so, we're excited to have something like that in Rio Grande City, and we're looking forward to helping him bring more people. The timing couldn't be better, as the end of the year approaches for the schools. They're always looking for a place to go and have the kids do some entertainment, so I'm hoping he'll be able to capture some of that this end of the school year. Thank you.
Dalinda, if I may, I know the city, some time back in its early years, did a strategic plan, which was the 2020 Vision, and a lot of people are familiar with that.
Yes.
Did you all happen to use some of those components?
Yes, so, we, and I have it here. We've, I've read through this thoroughly, flagged it, obviously. I've always said that we have taken a lot of what has been outlined here and actually executed, much of it. There's still some areas that we need to continue, and this is going to be a part of that discussion. So, we'll look through that unfinished business of Rio 2020 and expand on that as we prepare for this part of the strategic plan.
Because I think the mayor had one time mentioned that he was ready for 2040.
Well, we're ready to write that first chapter, and that's going to start up after the holidays, when everything is settled and we're all back at our desks after the holiday season. But, we'll be reporting along the way. We definitely need to engage the community, and we recognize that there will be nonprofits, other governments, like the county and the state, that will have some input, in addition to your schools and other partners, stakeholders. So, we look forward to that collaboration, but I think we can pull off the mayor's challenge. So, we're excited.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Ms. Bass, you want to touch on the museum?
Yes, Mr. Perez. We have been actively, and by "we" with, we have this young lady with the workforce, Brenda Martinez. She has logged over 692 items at the museum. It is amazing, the outpouring that our local community has in support of it. The commission, the museum commission, has made it history of Rio Grande City Museum. They want people that are new to the city, or are visiting, or even our own relatives that come and visit for the holidays, to come and see what our roots are. And so, they're working on that timeline, and most of the items are identified with the events that happened. They're looking at going all the way to Rancho Davis and, as we go through the different decades, identifying those events and those happenings in the community that impacted, whether for good or for bad, but it was an impact to the community. So, it is coming along. I did submit a report to you all of some of the things that need to still happen, and we still get people that come in. The museum is open from 9 to 12 and 1 to 5, and we do welcome anyone to go and see. The Veterans Display is still up. We have a small display on the Herkien Buell and also on the Huelga, which, those are some of the significant impacts in the history of Rio Grande. If you have any questions, welcome to answer them.
Can you reference, I know that Mr. Porter and the committee on the museum have a plan out to deal with, on the brick plan. You can...
Yes.
...talk a little bit on that?
In your packet, you have a picture, and it's one that has a layout, and it's got the brick pavers projects. The museum did, the commission did approve a fundraising, and it is to inlay the area that's right next to the courtyard with some brick pavers. And any family or anyone, organization, individual can purchase, and they will fill up that area with the brick pavers. You can do it in behalf of a family, a loved one, an organization, say they are going to be meeting this coming month and doing a marketing plan to put it out to the public.
What size?
It is about, I'd say about 8 by 14.
Which is pretty good size.
Yes. You can, so you can, I think they have about, maybe about 26 characters, 26 to 30 characters in words that you could put on the paper.
Okay.
We'll say that one area that is being under kind of construction and being cleared towards the back area, it's being set up to have the videos, ongoing videos. If you all remember, you went to the Bastrop Museum, and you went through some of the videos that they were running through. That area is being planned to have historical videos or event videos, so people can go in also and sit down and view them.
So, these will be like in a continuous loop?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything else?
I know that there's projects coming up, and that's also in your packet. They've got Romance in El Rio that highlights some of the love stories, and I know Sarah has some plans on that. These love stories are couples and families that want to share how their family came about and how they have contributed in their community. So, it's, last year, they had a display, and they had wedding dresses and love letters from 1920. There was a love letter that was embroidered, so it's a very exciting and romantic display.
Next, we have Mr. Milan. Are you going to be covering the citywide cleanup?
Yes. Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Mayor. This is a cooperation between the Plan Department, the Sanitation Department, and Public Works. We started also a program to attract people who have dilapidated homes, structures, to offer them roll-offs and help with city cleaning at a lower cost. In addition, we have the, I'm sorry, the cameras, the surveillance cameras that are supposed to be monitoring empty lots, alleyways, places where people are not supposed to throw trash. And on this, with the help of the cameras, will not only be preventing people from throwing trash, but also other type of activities that, you know, make a nuisance to our city. And I believe Mr. Perez has more information, reference to the trash picket.
Do you have any more questions? Yeah, we're going to start on mid-January to mid-February with the citywide cleanup. We're going to have some roll-off containers there at the 14 acres property, which is located at 632 Eisenhower Road. We're going to have anything extra, with these holidays coming up, a lot of people, a lot of residents are going to have a lot of bulky, extra bulky materials, and brush, we're going to, a set brush, bags, tires, maybe, we're going to go probably with four tires per household. So, we're going to try to do that maybe every six months for like 30 days. So, we're going to start, like I said, in mid-January to mid-February, so, see how it works. And then, with the assistance of Public Works, I think, I believe Public Works, they already started with working the alleyways, so, I don't know if Mr. Guerra could touch on that, but see how, you know, how it works.
So, the citywide, it's a comprehensive plan, so you have, you're going to set up roll-offs at the 14 acres.
Correct.
Residents can go dump after the holidays, they're bulky items. They'll have to show proof of residency.
Yes.
We're going to try that for a month and see how it works out, because the idea is that instead of us picking it up alongside the back streets or alleyways, that hopefully this will alleviate some of that.
Correct.
And then, Milan's going to set up cameras to, I guess, have people not dumping in the normal places that they normally dump, so we can catch those and hopefully minimize the dumping. And then, Fernandez already started cleaning up all the alleyways. It's a citywide comprehensive plan, meaning we're putting in extra effort and combining all the resources and making sure that we clean up as quickly as we can, but we're also asking the public for assistance if they can go drop off their bulky items.
And that's free of charge for the residents, so...
We've got to make sure we advertise. We've got to make sure we let the public know that that's available to them.
We are going to advertise this coming week, for a whole month, actually.
Okay.
So, I go through social media, newspapers, which is Town Crier, and Channel 12 with Kristin.
And Mr. Milan's also going to go after the empty lots, especially in the historical area, in the downtown area, the abandoned homes, and we're making an extra push there by offering these roll-offs at a discounted rate, so that they can be encouraged to clean up, clean out those lots that are in the downtown area.
I think, and I think we had discussed it, Mr. Milan, to try and make personal contact with the owners of these abandoned properties.
Right.
And make sure that they get the message that, you know, the city is willing to do their part, you know, to get these places cleaned out.
Yes, Commissioner.
Advertise it also.
The effort is to persuade them and offer a lower price roll-off, so they can make it, help us make it happen and have a cleaner city, as trying, as, you know, more, something to be proud of.
And you've already had some success, right, recently?
So far, it's so good that we had two cases that the owner was, they successfully demolished it themselves, a much lower price rather than we doing it ourselves. And they're happy that everybody's cleaner.
No, that, I saw lots, it makes a big difference, and easier to maintain after they're cleaned out.
Yes.
Very good.
Thank you, guys.
I just wanted to mention too, that we're working in the month of December and part of January with the delinquent accounts. We're having some issues there, so, just to let you guys know. Thank you.
Any other departmental reports? Norman?
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Just wanted to report quickly, you know, we had 2,588 visitors coming to our library, and then we do an outreach program to local headstarts in the school districts and also in our library, and we reached 720 in attendance for those. We had our Storybook Christmas yesterday, and it's, this was our seventh annual. We have pre-fotos with Santa. The Police Department has been very gracious in helping us with that. EDC, Main Street, Tourism, all came together, as well as several individuals from various departments came to help us out, which we're very appreciative, because we're a small staff. But, we also had Medina Electric donated $750 to our nonprofit, which is the Friends of the Ropam City Public Library. Just to let you know, most public libraries in the nation have a nonprofit group, and they're called the Friends of the Library. Ours was established in 1990. So, since 1990, we've had a good core group that have been successful in raising money for us and also advocating for us and letting people know that our nonprofit exists. We also got a nice surprise from United Way, and I know that they'll be making a presentation at a later date, but the Friends Group received $3,000 from United Way. So, you know, again, I, like I tell my staff and we tell our patrons, you know, the United Way dollars do stay here in Stark County, in Rio Grande City, and we're very appreciative of those monies. And again, we use those for our programs. We do have a Books for Babies. We use it for our summer reading program and other programs that we have in the library. Our staff continues to help out wherever we can, and we were also helping with the reception for the parade marshals, and we were very glad to be able to do that. And just like other people help us, we're also available to help other departments. So, I have...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody over?
Any?
Good evening, Commissioners. I just want to inform you that we are moving forward with our lift station project, working with Rio Delta. Gilbert is here to give you a little presentation on the lift station. We are 99.9% completed with the project. There's just a little, I guess it's just one thing that we're planning, to acquire some land for the Blue Bonnet Lift Station, but other than that, Rio Delta already submitted the plans to Texas Water Development Board. We're hoping within a week or so, they will get approved, and then so we can go out, get approval from the commission and the mayor, you know, so we can go out for bids and start the project itself.
Very good.
Also, we are coordinating with Arnold Garcia. He did our tanks inspection about three years ago, so he is coming in this year. We're hoping we can do it by the end of the month of December, early January, because we usually do the inspections during the winter time, because that's when customers use less water. So, that's what we're working on. Mr. Garcia, I guess I called, I don't think I called Mr. Jones. Enrique, Roger, and Juan Carlos did three connections today, actually, to the area for the Lily Lavender and all those people to the Ranchitos of Doria Street. So, the people are coming in, getting the connections, and they did three connections.
You heard from them already?
Yes, the three connections were done today after lunch. Enrique went out there.
There was a gentleman that came in earlier this week and personally went out of his way to come into my office and thank us for it, and I said, "Well, I didn't have a lot to do with it, you know, it was something that was already, you know, decided before." But, he, I don't know the gentleman's name.
Mr. Trevino, he came, you know, and I want to thank you, Araciliono. It was not only me, you know, it was part of Commissioners and Mr. Perez coming in and giving us the green light, you know, to be able to extend the water line. So, I said, "You know what, let me take you to Mr. Perez, so you can thank him yourself," you know. And at the same time, you know, mayor and Commissioners, when you are able to see them, he said he was very grateful for us giving them water to that area, because he had been a couple of years, five to 15 years.
He said he'd been hauling for a little over five years' water, and he said, "I'm glad I don't have to do that anymore."
Yeah, I don't have to be going to the plant and getting water every day. He will, amen to that, and so looking forward to helping them out as much as we can.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other reports? We're good.
That's it?
Yes, sir.
We'll move on to the consent agenda. We have 2A, consider approval of the departmental travel request, and B, consider approval of minutes from the previous meetings. We can, do you have any specific questions regarding either one of them? We can take them separate, or we can take them on a consent.
At this time, we have no travel request.
We'll give you a minute to review the amendment. If not, we're going to entertain a motion.
Mayor Protem, there are no corrections or questions, I move that we approve item 2B.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Ramirez, second by Mr. Jones. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Although the opposing side. Motion carried. We'll go to Resolutions, 3A, Discussion and Possible Action Approving Resolution Number 2017-27, addressing the City of Rio Grande City Police Department, Participation with the Border Star Grant and Amendment to the Department's Overtime Policy to Facilitate the Session.
This is a request coming in from the Governor's Office. It's in order to allow salaried employees to work Operation Stone Garden and local border security. Chief Solis could probably elaborate more on that.
Good evening, Commissioners. Our current policy allows us, the wording on it, we send it off to the Office of the Governor's Office to make sure that if salaried employees worked Operation, we would, if we would ever get audited, it would go through. So, they suggested a few changes to our policy. So, what we were presenting is their changes, just to allow it to go through whenever we get audited by Border Star or Stone Garden.
So, how does that work, Chief, as far as the overtime? Salaried employee gets paid a certain rate based on your daily hour or your hourly rate?
They're based off of your hourly rate.
Hourly rate.
You do the 80 hours by the 26 pay periods, and that's how you get it.
Very good. Bingo? Hold on, I'll take a motion.
I saw more, Mayor.
I have a motion by Mr. Ramirez, second by Mr. Jones. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Although the opposing side. Motion carried. More ordinances, 4A, Consider and Approve An Ordinance Authorizing the Issuance, Safe and Delivery of City of Rio Grande City, Texas, General Obligation Refunding Bonds Series 2018, Delegating Certain Authority to the Mayor and City Manager Pursuant to the Provisions of Texas Government Code Section 1207.007 and 1207.008, Leaving the Continuing Direct Annual Advolory of Tax, Authorizing the Refunding of Certain Outstanding Obligations, Authorizing the Execution of a Bond Purchase Contract, Approving an Official Statement Executed of an escrow and trust agreement, the Subscription and Purchase of Certain Federal Securities, and Making Other Provisions Regarding Such Bonds and Matters Incidents There To... Mr. Perez?
Yeah, I'll let Mr. Cantu elaborate on the purpose of this.
Good evening, Commissioners. Basically, what this is, is refinancing of one of the bonds that we have outstanding. It's a 2007 bond. This would allow us to save close to 1.7 million, I believe, in the next, within the next 22 years that the bond is outstanding. years that the bond is outstanding still. Mr. Robert De Hidina is here to give you a better presentation of how that would work.
Thank you, Mr. Cantu. Again, for the record, Robert De Hidina, with the Star and the Hosa, and the other seven governors, Commissioners, Mr. Betis and staff, thank you for allowing me to present the plan of finance. As Mr. Cantu stated, it is a refunding strictly for savings, and we all know the refunding is the same way we would do for our home, but the goal, the objective, is to lower the interest rate, and we save on our monthly payments on mortgage. This operates the same way. You lower the interest rate, and you save and lower your annual payments on the bonds that are outstanding. And again, it's a plan of finance, general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2018. And I believe, I don't know if he's here in the audience, Mr. David Zapata, with J. Ramírez, Bond Counsel for the city. You can thank him, Mr. Garasai. He provided that long, lengthy agenda item, but it's standard information that has to be posted everywhere. Return to page one, again, the refunding summary. This goes back to the refinancing of this existing debt, the combination tax and refunding certificates obligation, Series 2007. I know some of the council members were here back in 2000, or Commissioners, back in 2007, when you pursued three financings with the Texas Water Development Board. Two of the financings, Series 2007A, 2007B, had an interest rate of 0%. The 2007A, the original loan amount was 2,885,000. The 2007B was 12,200,000. Both of them had a 0% loan. That is the reason we're not looking to entertain refinancing those loans, because it's a 0%, can't get any better than that. So, the 2007 financing, again, the summary's on the bottom. If we go out and sell the bonds roughly in February, the 2018, refinance an existing amount, 7,375,000. In the shaded area, the net present value savings is about 1,249,000. Percentage savings of refunded bonds, 16.9%. As a rule of thumb, whenever we recommend to our clients, cities, counties, school districts, community colleges, whenever you look to save on a refinancing, you want to do a savings of 3% or higher. And right now, we're at 16.9%, so it is obvious that this refunding is ready to go. We've been providing information to Mr. Betis and Mr. Cantu over the last few months, and this was the perfect opportunity to present it in the council agenda packet. The average annual savings from 2019 to 2040 is about 74,714. The bonds, the average coupon, when you actually did the loan back in 2007, is 5.13%. The reason the other two were 0% is because the priority, the Water Development Board, the availability on what kind of funds were available to the city at 0%. So, you went in with that project, 2007A and 2007B, at 0%. Those funds were already used up, so the remaining bucket was a low-interest rate loan, and at the time in 2007, that was a great interest rate. So, the average rate was about 5.13. So, if we're in the market last week, we would go from 5.13% to lower to 3.32%. Again, the objective and goal of the refinancing is lower the interest rate on the loan, and you lower the average annual payment on the loan. So, again, the refunding, we're not looking to increase property taxes. We're not looking to increase utility rates. A refinancing is strictly savings, and part of the resolution or the agenda item, you stated, ad valorem taxes, that's just the legal pledge. The city has always paid this debt back with revenues from the utility system. So, again, we're looking to save and leave money behind in the utility system, again, by lowering the interest rate on the financing. We're not looking to increase taxes, not looking to increase utility rates. On page two, it's the principal and interest on the loan. On page two, the second column from the left, those are the actual rates that were locked in back in 2007. 4.05% all the way down to 5.25%. The second column on the right-hand side titled Current Rates, if we sold this financing last week in the open market, we'd go from 4.05, the first one, to 1.77%. The last column on the right, that is the difference on savings, 2.28%, which is 228 basis points, all the way down to the last maturity, 5.25%. We lower that to 3.32% and save 1.93, roughly 193 basis points. And again, the principal amount in the middle, the par amount, we're looking to refinance Now, on the next page, savings summary, on page three, it is the fourth column, it's shaded, entitled Savings. That would be how much if we sold the bonds last week, how much you would save per year. And again, the only way we can lock in the interest rate is by selling the bonds in the open market. So, again, we need your approval this evening in order to move forward. So, again, the savings, roughly 78,000 the first couple of years. Total overall savings, 1,718,424. That is the net of the cost of issuance. The cost of issuance on this financing is roughly 219,000, and I provide information to Mr. Betis, Mr. Cantu, the cost of issuance, like the financing you did for the Water Development Board, like the financing we did back in 2010, consists of bond rating, bond insurance, bond counsel, financial advisor, Texas Attorney General, and so forth. All of that combined, it's numerous players, institutions involved, comes out to 219,000. And again, that amount, overall savings of 1,700,000, is the net amount. So, at closing, no one's going to be billed at the city. At closing, all the closing costs will be paid for, and the city will save. Say, for example, this financing was executed, we received these numbers, you would save 1,780,000, 1,718,000, and again, the cost of issuance would be 219,000. On page four, the timetable, if this item is approved this evening on December the 13th, we would have a rating call, Mr. Betis, Mr. Cantu, myself, with S and P. And the current bond rating with the city of River Grande City with Standard and Poor's is an A. That's exactly the same rating that the school district has with, I believe, Standard and Poor's and Fitch. So, on the week of the 15th, have a rating call. We price the bonds towards the bottom on February the 15th, and then we close 30 days later on March the 15th. And again, what's really key and important, Mr. Betis knows, Mr. Cantu, we've been talking about the audit. We all know how important the audit was back when we did the financing in 2013 with the Water Development Board, 2010, 2007. It lets the investors know exactly how the city's doing financially. And I know, hopefully, we're pretty close to the city completing the 2016 audit, hopefully here in the next few weeks. Once that's done, we provide all that information in the official statement that the bond investors will receive. It's about 60 pages long, contains information on the audit, on the city, and that's sent out by the underwriters to go out and raise the capital to do the refinancing. Now, on page five, last page of the presentation, the working group participants, we have the issuer, city of River Grande City, Texas, financial advisor, bond counsel, J. Ramírez Law Firm. The underwriters, Frost Bank and Hutchison, Shockey, and Early, have sent information to Mr. Betis, to Mr. Cantu, identifying the refunding over the last few weeks. Again, we've been working with city staff since September and informing them of the refinancing opportunity. Again, the underwriters are going to go out and sell the bonds and raise the capital for the city to do the refinancing. Underwriters Council, J. Cruz and Associates, and Winstead, they are the attorneys for the underwriters. And the paying escrow agent is UMB, United Missouri Bank, that would complete the financing team. And again, we'd go out there and pursue a bond rating with S and P, and also private bond insurance when we go out and sell the bonds. I know it's a lot of information, but if anybody has any questions?
So, in summary, we're going to say about $1,000,000, more or less, just over $1,000,000 over 22 years?
Over 1,700,000 right now, roughly about 1,700,000. We're hoping that...
But then after you pay all the closing costs, I mean, and...
The 1,700,000, Commissioner, if you go back to that page, the million on page three, on the shaded column, the 1,718,000, that has already taken out the cost of issuance. So, we're not looking to reduce that amount. So, the cost of issuance has already been removed from that savings amount, based on the interest rates from last week. In the financing, for example, Commissioner, that we did back in 2010, I think it was about 6.5 million certificates obligation, that financing cost was about 210,000 back in 2010. So, the cost of issuance is pretty comparable, but the savings has already been removed, I'm sorry, the cost of issuance has already been removed from that savings. And that's what we always present, and typically what is presented to issuers, the overall savings, cost of issuance has already been removed. For example, the school district, it did one, they would see the same format. Dr. Miguel de los Santos represents the school district here, he would provide the same information, savings shaded, and he would tell you, cost of issuance has already been removed from there.
Okay. Very good.
Just a brief history, Commissioner, this particular bond was part of the 20 million package for the water treatment plant.
The water treatment plant.
Yes.
Yes, water and sewer projects, yes, sir. Absolutely.
That was in your time.
The smaller one was for the wastewater. I think it's B.
And how fast time flies, that was just 10 years ago.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Need for a question?
I'm good.
Mr. Pettit?
No, I think it's a very good opportunity to try and save the city some funds, especially on interest, and we do look forward to these savings, because we do need to continue in expanding our infrastructure. And so, hopefully, with the audit being completed, that's also going to open additional opportunities.
And also, if I may add, this information will go to the firm that's doing our rate study. Any savings also are savings to the users, so...
Very good.
All right, I'll take a motion.
I'll move.
Move by Mr. Ramírez. Second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposing, same sign. Motion passes. A little planning, discussion, I'm sorry?
We're going to table that.
Do you need a motion to table? Yes, I'll move, Mayor Porton, to table this item.
I have a motion to table item 5A by Mr. Ramírez. I have a second by Mr. Jones. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposing, same sign. Motion carried. We'll go to our number six. City Attorney Report.
Mayor Porton?
Mayor, before we start on that, Ms. Brown was in here, so one of the things that we wanted to do is we have some...
Valerie, dear.
Oh, she is? I didn't see you. Okay, we got some awards for employees for years of service. They would like to present, kind of was trying to put them off a little longer, see if the mayor would come, because he normally likes to take pictures with these type of awards, but since he's taking a little longer than normal, I figured we'd bring them up now. They do need to require his signature, but we'd like to do is present it to them, because we wouldn't want to keep him down much longer.
Okay.
And if y'all would like to take a picture with him. Ms. Brown, would you do the honors?
These are five, 10, and 15 years, and it'll be on your departmental report?
Yeah.
Okay.
You don't want to wait to see the mayor get here before we close meeting?
However you like.
Don't want to wait the employees, make the employees waiting longer?
Yeah.
Being late, that's fine.
I will start with the five years. We have Gabriel Barrera from Public Works Department. Is he here, Colonel?
No, ma'am.
Okay. The next one is Rolando Benavides from Planning Department, five years.
Five years, very good.
Yes, we can take pictures for the five years after...
Yeah, you can get up here and then wait for the rest, we get them all at the same time.
Up here, you can wait this here. Another five-year, Eric Estamina from Parks.
Parks and Parks, Eric.
Another five-year, Silvestre Montoya from the Water Department. Five-year, Jesus Reyes Vázquez, IT. I don't think he's here.
No.
Five-years, Yolanda Riojas from Library. Five-years, Refugio Solís, Public Works. Five-years, Jeremy Trevino, Water Department. And five-years, Diana Zamora from PD.
She has to work greater than she does three months.
Okay, the next one we'll do is the 10-year. Sure?
Yeah, sure.
Go ahead. Okay, next will be the 10-years. Antonio Carrillo from the Water Department. Uvaldo Garcia from Public Works. Right up here up front, okay? Sure. Letizia Guerra from Library. Raymond López from Public Works. 10-years, Ricardo Reyes, Chief from Fire Department.
Only been 10-years.
I know, I thought it was more.
Chief Joey Solís from PD. 10-years, Robert Trevino, PD. And 10-years, Imelda Vela from Sanitation. She was not able to be here at... That's the ones for 10, picture? Certificate? Missing a certificate for Antonio Cantú, ten years for the Planning Department, Tony?
All right, Tony. Thank you. What happened to the ten year picture?
Oh, no, yours is here somewhere, I've seen it. Here you go, that way they can take a picture with you as well. Okay, we have one for fifteen, and that is Ruben Sanchez from the Public Unit.
So, let's get down to the thirteen.
Thirteen.
Sanchez, certificate. That's it, Mr. Pettis?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I think, Mayor Proton, that it speaks very well of employees that stick around in the good and the bad with the city, and do wanna thank them for all their service. I know for one, like, I hired Tony, straight out of Chicago, and though we thought he's gonna last for ten years, but I'm glad he's, he's still with us.
Yeah, that's a good sign.
Congratulations to everybody, and it's been, it's been a pleasure that, for me personally, because I've, I've been here a while, to be able to, to work with you all, and congratulations, I hope that you all stick around for many, many more years. I'm, I'm very honored to have been part of your employment here with Rio Grande City, so, congratulations.
And Mayor Proton, I'd like to point out, even though Letizia has ten years with the city, it's twenty years with the library.
Yeah.
Twenty-one years.
Twenty-one years.
And the county. It's awesome. That's true.
Very good. Anything else?
Yes, sir.
Good. We were in City Manager's Report.
Yes, sir.
Six A, Discussion and Possible Action to Authorize City Manager or His Designated Appointed to Sign a Contract for Retail Electrical Energy for Up to a Five-Year Term with Direct Energy?
Yes. I think we got, Marcos, go ahead. They've done, they went out for bid, did some analysis on what's available out there now, and this is their recommendation, based on the market.
I believe the, the last time I came before you, I told you about where the market was going with them closing the coal plants, and, and it looks like it went up a little bit when we went out and got the quotes from one to five years, actually because of the immediate pressure from the coal plants, the, the savings for you guys for one and two-year contracts is actually only around twenty-five percent, but the further you go out, they see a correction for it, it's trying to come back down. So, going out, if we did a one-year contract, we said about two hundred thousand a year, but going out to a five-year contract, it's about two hundred and twenty-one thousand, all right? Because a new contract, now that we're getting, has everything included in the energy price, and the old one didn't, you're really gonna save effectively about two hundred and forty thousand dollars a year for five years, so it's almost about one, one and a quarter million dollar savings over five years, it's very significant. As I'm looking at the energy going out beyond five years, because I got some quotes just to see what happens seven, eight years out, and it starts going back up, so I think that we actually caught, we're, we're at perfect timing for catching the bottom of the market for a long-term contract, and one of the things that I'll tell Mr. Pettis is, we're probably gonna, as we sign this five-year contract, we probably have to monitor the energy every year, because we can add a year at the end, every five, at the end of five years, because if we see it creeping up or staying flat, we probably wanna purchase as much as they give us every year, because unfortunately for me, since two thousand and five, every time I come, we're saving money. But when you hit the bottom, now all of a sudden, five years out, you have to start increase, you have to start budgeting for increases, and that's never a happy, a happy thing. So, it's nice if you can know what's happening for you four years out, so, so your administration can budget for it and, and make those allocations. And that's why the strong recommendation for going out five years, and that's the real sweet spot right now, at about two hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. It's with direct energy, we actually got them to agree to allow us to add ten percent of, of your annual usage at the same price, or if the market drops, they'll actually give us the lower price during that five-year term. So, we know you have some expansion coming with your, with your wastewater plan and your stuff, so, we wanted to make sure that we got it in the contract where you could actually add in a year or two at the same price, just in case pressure goes up, where we can maintain that savings with your growth.
Mr. Rolando, and those numbers are based on last year's, I guess, usage?
Your, your, yes, it's actually your, your existing contract that you have right now expires this month, your budget with them effective for all your electric accounts is about eight hundred and fifty-five thousand over the last twelve months. So, your budget starting in January will drop to about six hundred and fifteen thousand a year, so it's a significant drop. And I'm talking to Mr. Cantú, and he, he wants every penny of it. He, and he'd like it today, he could, but you know, it starts in January. So, it's, it's actually twenty thousand dollars a month starting in January, which is, I know everybody needs money right now, it's, it'll be, it'll be a good deal.
Thank you.
Have you had a chance to, I guess, to review the, I guess, all the terms and contracts and all that, see if there's, there's no drawbacks, there's not, no, no hidden agenda?
No hidden agenda, and it's actual, everything's laid out, so there are no hidden costs.
And you're, you're recommending that we put...
Yes, sir, definitely.
Yeah, there's an issue that, that, very, very small issue on, on the indemnification part of the contract, which is section five and fourteen E, legal recommends that we add only to the extent allowed by Texas law regarding the indemnification, other than that, we re-reat the contract, and we don't have a problem.
And they, and they made the change.
They made the change.
They're legal, I made sure that they had the changes before I made this meeting, I said, "Hey, we need to make it effective," and, and they got the addendum. So, the changes have been made.
Okay.
So, what we can do is make sure that the addendum covers exactly what he's pointing out, based on his recommendation. So, we'll run it by him one more time.
Does that thing need to be included in the motion?
It has to, just to include on your motion, you, you can stay subject to the language, and, and it's actually on your packet.
It's here on the, the notes.
Remember.
Yeah, 'cause I just emailed you the updated language yesterday, right? But I don't know if you had any time to put it in the package, but we already, I already delivered it to the city.
Subject to the extent of...
I'll go ahead and, and, and change the motion when you're ready.
Mr. Jones, if you have the writing there, you can...
It's just subject to extent allowed by Texas law, so be it.
This, are you making a motion?
Yes, a motion, yes.
I have a motion by Mr. Jones.
I'll second the motion.
And a second by Mr. Ramírez, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll go to six B, Discussion and Possible Action to Authorize the Extension to a Financial Advisory Services Contract Between the City of Rio Grande City, Texas, and Estrada y Nohosa and Company, Inc.
Let, let Mr. Cantú elaborate on that, it's an extension of services.
Yes, their contract expired on December fifth, I believe, December fifth of this year. They've assisted me a great deal since I've been here, the short period of time, everything I needed on bonds, they're just a phone call away. In order for them to assist us in the savings of, of the bond that we wanna refinance, we need their contract to be extended, or it doesn't have to be the five years, but we are requesting five years. They've been with us since two thousand and nine, like I said, they've been really good at helping us. Since I've been here, they've been a phone call away every time I reach them, if I don't reach them at their phone, they're pretty quick at getting back at us, email or phone call.
Anything else?
Sure.
You think that, that's true?
Yes, sir, if I can, just quickly, just wanna give you some information on our firm. For the record, Robert Tinkin here with Estrada y Nohosa. Thank you, Mayor Proton, and commissioners, and staff. I wanna just present our credentials, we're celebrating our twenty-fifth year with the firm, I've been with the firm seventeen years. I used to be as tall as Mr. Cantú, and now I'm just five-seven, five-six, maybe depending, if you ask my son or my wife. But again, we're celebrating our twenty-fifth year, we just have credentials here on page one. We've been around since nineteen ninety-two. In Texas, we are the second-ranked financial advisory firm, and overall in the US, we're ranked tenth nationally. We're a hundred percent minority-owned, employee-owned. If you turn to page two, other issuers that we represent are cities, counties, school districts, community colleges. And on page three, we have, over the twenty-five years, we've done over almost forty-nine hundred transactions totaling over four hundred and twenty-six billion dollars, that includes financial advisory and underwriting. And on page four is a list of all the firms that, I mean, I'm sorry, all the individuals that work with the firm, our headquarters is in Dallas, I'm out of the San Antonio office. And again, the representation down here in the valley for the majority of the school districts is Dr. Miguel de los Santos, who represents the Rio Grande City ISD, CISD. And on page five are just some of the cities I listed as a financial advisor, some of their financings, and I listed in the tombstone, tombstone on page five, the two financings I've assisted the city on, six point five million and one million nine hundred and thirty thousand. And again, I listed them again on page six, those are the two that we've assisted the city on as their financial advisor. And on page seven, pretty much are the surrounding area financial advisory experience that we represent, we have City of Rio Grande City, City of Roma, Rio Grande City ISD, Zapata County, City of La Vida, those are just some of the ones I represent personally, the rest of them are either by Mr. Nohosa, Dr. de los Santos. I normally have this area and a little bit further up north and south of San Antonio. And again, we started back in two thousand and nine, representing the city as their financial advisor, the original contract was for three years. When that expired, we came back in front of the council, commission, in December of two thousand and twelve, December the fifth, and at that time, the commission decided to extend our contract for another five years, that's pretty much our standard contract for five years with all our clients. It can be canceled at any time, thirty-day notice. So, again, we only receive payment whenever financing has been approved and closed, so we're hoping to continue the relationship with the city.
Yeah, I've done a great job, you know, helping out the city, so again, you know, if anybody, nobody has an objection, I would like to make a motion to approve the contract.
Yes, sir. Second, I have a motion by Mr. Ramírez, a second by Mr. Jones, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, behalf of my firm and myself, thank you so much, and again, I wanna wish everybody here Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going right along, we'll go to the six...
C?
C, we're on C.
Yes, sir.
Discussion and Possible Action to Authorize the Extension of the Lease Agreement with the Valley Metro for Rental Premises at four oh five east, Mirasola Street, Sui Day, Locusti Hedina Complex, and four oh eight east, Main Street, Betsy's Landing, and a portion of the adjacent parking lot.
Ms. Beas has been working with Valley Metro, their contract expired in December, November?
November.
November thirtieth, and so, they, we had a meeting with them, they need something for the interim, so they can continue to operate till we get the actual contract that we need to sign, which is gonna be for another year. So, they've asked us to give us lease for something for two months for the next meeting, till the next meeting so we can have the contract ready for you.
So, so this is good for, for two months?
Two months, sir.
Correct.
To have the actual...
At the next council meeting.
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion?
I'll move, Mayor, will you approve?
I have a motion, a second by Mr. Jones, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll go to, go to six D, Discussion and Possible Action to Authorize the Extension of the City's Current Bank Depository Agreement until January thirty-first, twenty eighteen. To Pettis.
This is Ms. Beas, she, this is a depository agreement that we've done, that we need to have with the bank.
Basically, same issue with Valley Metro, we did go out for proposals, it was an oversight on the, some of the banks that they did not submit, so we're gonna have to redo the procurement. In the meantime, I did talk to Mr. Ruben Chapet-Lonstar, he's willing to extend the agreement with the current rates that we have. We've been working closely with them, and I think they're, they've been doing a good job with us. We hope to bring a, the actual renewal at the next council meeting.
Very good.
I'll move, I'll move, Mayor Proton.
Sir, I have a motion, a second by Mr. Jones, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll go to six E, this is an update report on lift stations by Rio Delta.
Mayor Proton, gentlemen of the council, ladies, ladies and gentlemen, Gilbert Geto from Rio Delta Engineering. As far as the lift station project goes, Mayor Proton, we delivered the plan to the forereview, to the Water Development Board yesterday. The reviewer was out of the office all last weekend up until this morning, she sent us an email this morning acknowledging receipt of the plans and the specifications. In a conversation she had, she, they were actually, the, the whole team sick, crew was down for a workshop in McAllen Tuesday, and one of our engineers in Edinburgh, Ivan, was at the meeting, and they discussed the project, she's sort of intimated that she was gonna try and get us a letter by Christmas, so we can move forward with advertising in January, hopefully awarding in February, and try and get the contractor going here sometime in May or June.
Just to kind of summarize, this is a one point two million dollar project, and we're doing all seven lift stations?
It's a one point, I think what you have right now, still left in the budget, is close to one point six. My preliminary cost estimates, what we're doing is, we're doing, we've got the seven original lift stations in there, there's gonna be four new wet wells and complete new lift stations out of the seven, three are being rehabbed, and then I also threw in to remodel the Ringo Park Lift Station, see if we can eliminate that dry well, lift up the, the existing pumps and, and modify the, the pulleys so that they'll meet the new performance curves, and also abandoning the FM thirty-one sixty-seven grinder lift station has been causing problems. So, as part of that abandonment, we extended a sewer line and gravity line from the new Solís Lift Station to that site, and tied in the gravity that goes into that little lift station, we can just wipe that one off and get it off the boards. So, I've got a, a cost estimate right now, in that we do everything just the way it is, it, it comes out to a little bit over two million dollars. If we take away the odor control units that we specified for the plants, those are thirty-three thousand per lift station, and that would be for eight lift stations that we're doing, because we're eliminating one, that, that drops the, the budget down to one point seven, about a hundred thousand over what we have now. If we don't do the elimination of that lift station, say we just do the gravity line, don't abandon that lift station, we don't do anything to the Ringo Lift Station, and we cut out the Best Western Lift Station, which was one of those that previously we decided was not critical, then we're down to a one point five, a little bit below budget, based on my cost estimates. So, what we're gonna do, and what I'm proposing to do, is put out a packet with, with four alternates in that regard, so that we can pick and choose the packages that best fit the budget and what the city wants to do at that time.
Well, when the time comes, we can revisit the, the finances, I, I'd like to see the whole project finished.
In preliminary discussions with the Water Development Board, there is available funding, to where you could apply for available funding for the packages under the same terms that you have now, which I think is all loan, but it's low interest, long, long-term loans. Because of the depth of the wet wells, the prime lift required, and the volume, if we go with just a standard duplex pumps, you have to have bigger pumps, more power, and if one goes out, you're out of luck. With the triplex, we can go with smaller pumps, smaller horsepower, better prime lift, and hopefully lower your operating costs and your energy bills. It gives you more redundancy and more backup.
Very good. Ramirez, any questions for Rio Grande?
Yeah.
This doesn't require any action, it's only an update. So with that said, thank you for... We'll go to item number seven, Executive Session, Chapter 551, Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, Consultation with Attorney, and 551.072, Deliberation Regarding Real Property and 551.087, Economic Development Matters. It is 7:13, and we're going into Executive Session. Okay, it's 7:53, and we're back in regular session, and consideration of action on matters discussed during Executive Session, including the following. Let it, let the record reflect that the mayor has joined us in the meeting, and we are on item eight. I'm sorry.
You can finish it, sir. Yes, sir.
We'll go to item 8A, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Cost Number DC-15-604, BFI Waste Services of Texas OP, doing business as Allied Waste Services of Rio Grande Valley versus City of Rio Grande, Texas, and its elected officials and their official capacity. I'll make the motion authorizing, I'd like to make the motion to authorize the city attorney to respond to the lawsuit as discussed in Executive Session.
I'll second the motion.
Second. Go ahead.
Not those.
Okay, I have a motion by Ramirez, and a second by Mr. Jones.
Of course, you made the motion, so I thought I had seconded it.
Oh. I made the motion.
You made the motion, and Richard had a second.
So Mr. Jones was the second second. Who's on first?
Okay. I have a motion and a second by Mr. Ramirez. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify with the same sign. Item may be passed. We'll go to item 8B, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Cost Number DC-17-134, in reference to renewal of Rio Grande City Mayor Huellier Real at 229 Judicial District Court of Starr County, Texas, Section 551-0.071.
Didn't that include the city commission as well, or just the mayor?
It does.
Hey, we didn't include the commission, not just the mayor. Just to clarify.
We have no action on that item. We go to item C, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding City of Rio Grande City, RN 1027 77661, TPDS Permit Number WQ0010802001, Document Number 2017-0961, MLM-E Enforcement, Cost Number 54671, Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code.
Mayor Potem, you make a motion to authorize city manager and city attorney to respond to the TCEQ.
I have a motion by Mr. Ramirez. Second. And a second by Mr. Jones. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We go to 8D, Discussion and Possible Lease Sale or Purchase of Real Property, Track 1 and Track 2, Section 551.072, Texas Local Government Code.
That's yours.
Okay, I authorize the city manager and city attorney to pursue legal matters pertaining to Track 2 as discussed in Executive Session. You have a second?
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Jones, and a second by Mr. Ramirez. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We go to 8D, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Possible Economic Development Agreement Related to the St. Ague project under Chapter 380 of the Texas Local Government Code, Section 551.071, and Section 551.087, Texas Government Code. And we have no action on that item. I'll entertain a motion for item nine.
I saw more.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Ramirez, a second by Mr. Jones. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign. Motion passes. And that is to adjourn. Record reflected 7:59. Thank you, gentlemen.